Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting this Monday evening, October 3rd. I am now calling this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
It's a pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Gofalls.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pappen has not yet arrived. And Mayor Bonilla.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everybody, back to the hybrid meetings that the City Council of the City of San Mateo is now having. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to still participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request-to-speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise-your-hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via telephone, press *9 to raise your hand, and when called upon, press *6 to unmute. These options for public comment will be available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, so we'll begin the first of two study session items. The first is City Council Strategic Plan Mid-Cycle Updates. And I believe we have a staff presentation. Denise Garcia.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Denise Garcia, and I am a management analyst in the City Manager's Office, and I'm here to present to you all the strategic plan mid-cycle review. So before reviewing the strategic plan updates, I wanted to share the strategic oh, my, I'm sorry, the strategic plan timeline. It is Monday, but it doesn't feel like it. So first, the City Council goal-setting process includes a three-step deliberation that typically starts in January and ends in April. The process began on January 29th at the Blue Sky Workshop, where City Council received public comment and proposed priorities for fiscal year 2022 to 2023 strategic plan. At the March 7th City Council meeting, staff presented a draft version of the strategic plan with each of the priorities, along with resources required to achieve the priorities. City Council reviewed and provided feedback. At the April 4th City Council meeting, City Council adopted the final version of the strategic plan. On July 1st, the strategic plan commenced. And today, we are here to provide a mid-cycle review of implementation progress of this current fiscal year plan. And just a reminder, the strategic plan identifies council priority items that staff will work on between July 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 2023. Currently, all priority initiatives are on track, but there are a handful of initiatives that have not yet commenced but are slated for later this fiscal year. The next slide will share the different initiatives that have not started. So these are the initiatives that will commence in early 2023. Here we have evaluate leaf blower regulations, study landscaping water conservation policies, study fiscal impact of adopting an ESG provision for our city's investment policy, analyze density minimums for mixed-use projects, and update the density bonus and community benefits policies. And lastly, explore whether the city should adopt an ordinance to zone parcels for up to 10 units of residential density per parcel if the parcel is located in a transit-rich area or an urban infill site. If there are any questions about any of the initiatives listed in the strategic plan or specifically on this list here, department heads are here and available to answer any of your questions. But tonight, the recommendation on this item for City Council is to review and discuss, if needed, the initiatives and updates to the 2022 to 2023 strategic plan. This concludes my presentation. And again, department heads are here to answer any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Bringing it to the council. Any questions? Okay. Councilmember Lee, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have, I think. Well, actually, let's go to public comment. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two speaker slips under this item.
Let's let them. And we have, oh, we have two speaker slips and how many online?
And we have two, two speaker slips in person. And I have, if you are planning to speak online, if you could please raise your hand at this time. I will give you a few seconds to raise your hand. And if you have not turned in your speaker slip yet, if you could please do that for me in just a moment, anyone who has not turned in a speaker slip or who has not raised their hand. Okay, our, we have two speakers, and the last speaker will be Michelle Hudson. And there are, oh, there is one speaker online. Anjuli and Ryanne. And those are two speakers online. The last speaker will be Ryanne. One moment.
Okay, good. We have three minutes each for speakers. Thank you. Go ahead.
Council, I'm here tonight to comment on Agenda Item 1, Objective 27. The City Council objectives. After the meeting, I will send a copy. Are you going to follow me?
Madam Clerk, is the, is the microphone on over there?
I am working on that. Just a moment. We're going to start you up.
There you go. Let's restart his time, please.
I did restart.
Thank you.
Sorry, you had to start over. I'm here tonight to comment on Agenda Item 1, Objective 27. The City Council objectives are 22, 23. After the meeting, I will copy all of you, and I also copy the seven council candidates, because I think it's time for them to start getting involved. San Mateo has been a leader in the climate fight. But as you know, I was very disappointed that the City Council deferred last week a full-reach code for existing buildings, and it's taking up at this time a only a limited number of minor electrification changes for existing buildings. I was also extremely disappointed last Friday when I read the objectives list, and which is attached to the nice staff report. It appears to be a cut in pace from an earlier staff report. It talks about presenting reach codes to the council in September. It does not reflect what the council, I think, decided last week. Nowhere does the language sound like what we all heard about council directing staff to do an outreach to stakeholders, contractors, and homeowners. I heard verily, very clearly, at least I did, the year 2025, in the candidates forum in this very chamber last Monday, exactly one week ago, all seven candidates clearly agreed on 2025. It's on everybody's mind. That year is nowhere to be found in the objectives, so I have to wonder what's going on. I do appreciate you taking up reach codes for new construction and some very limited number of changes in reach codes for existing buildings. But we do urge you to reconsider staff's, I think, obvious decision to delay a full-reach code for existing buildings to some other unknown time in the future. And that's the only conclusion I can draw based on the fact that it's not in the list of objectives. We also believe it's not too late to bring back a full-reach code for existing buildings for the October 17th council meeting. For the sake of our community, our families, and especially our youth, please take critically needed action by bringing forward a full-reach code for existing buildings for consideration by council before you leave office. We ask you tonight that you direct staff to prepare a full-reach code for existing buildings for discussion at the October 17th meeting. And if staff isn't willing to do that, I ask you to make sure your decision is clear. This is because I think a brand-new, we all know, a brand-new council is taking over. For their sake, for our sake, let's settle at least one issue now and get it on the agenda for next time. I thank you for your time. I do ask two things then, that the objectives be clear on 2025, and you bring back the full-reach code for existing buildings at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The next in-person speaker is Michelle Hudson. And we have two speakers were approved online. We have one other hand raised. We are taking two speakers online, ending with Ryanne. Let's go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Hudson. I'm here tonight to comment on Objective 27, the decarbonization objective. The San Mateo Climate Action Team appreciates the council's climate leadership, but we are very disappointed that the city deferred a full-reach code for existing buildings and is taking up only a limited number of minor measures for existing buildings this fall. Now is the time to make good on the decarbonization objective and move forward with a full-reach code for existing buildings. The state of California has just indicated that by 2030, gas furnaces and water heaters will not be sold in our state. In addition, the Inflation Reduction Act provides funding for electrification that has made it equally affordable to go electric as it is to buy new gas equipment. You also know that the community strongly supports electrification of existing buildings, as evidenced by the now 440 signatures on our petition. A full-reach code for existing buildings has been sufficiently studied, outreach, and the legal analysis has been done. Our current city council has the requisite knowledge of reach codes to get it done this fall. We truly do not understand the reason for delaying a full-reach code for existing buildings. We urge you to reconsider your decision and to direct staff to prepare a full-reach code for existing buildings for discussion at the October 17th City Council meeting. Apart from this ask, we also note that members of this council directed staff at the council's study session on reach codes to study a full-reach code for existing buildings that would take effect in January 2025. We see no mention of that in the status update on staff's work plan for objective number 27. So we ask the status update be changed accordingly or clarify to the community if staff intends to disregard this directive from council. Thank you.
I apologize. Thank you. Our next speaker is remote Anjuli Mishra. Please go ahead.
Hello, council members. My name is Anjuli Mishra. I'm 15 and a high school student in San Mateo. I'm here tonight to comment on Objective 11, 27, sorry, the decarbonization objective. I'm here on behalf of the San Mateo Youth Climate Action Team to tell you, council members, that we are deeply disappointed. We have shown up to countless city council meetings, witnessed very little opposition to what advocates are asking for, but rather an overwhelming support. I've had conversations with so many of your constituents about the San Mateo Climate Action Team's petition, which has been signed by hun, signed by several hundreds, several hundred people, not to mention many students. I've seen the federal government and state government recently take action to encourage electrification. And despite San Mateo being a leader for climate in the Bay Area, you have decided to delay action when there is absolutely no reason to, considering that a full building electrification ordinance has already been sufficiently studied. You made a promise with this objective to your constituents that you are not on track to keep. And if the council only continues to take miniscule efforts to reach, to try to reach that goal, like the current proposed measures, you're never going to reach it. The climate crisis is incredibly urgent, so there's no time to take action that won't be impactful. I'm here today after my school day because I want the council to know that the advocates proposing the model reach codes have not just been adults, but students like me as well. As a young person, myself and my generation will have to live with the consequences of climate change. And if you don't properly address our reality, then you are actively denying us our future. I understand that it might feel scary to pass something so, quote-unquote, "strong", but if you don't take action now, when will you? Like, delaying does absolutely nothing. Council, I'm asking you to please reconsider your decision and direct staff to prepare a full-reach code for existing buildings at the October 17th City Council meeting. It's not too late to do this. You can decide now to push San Mateo forward. Apart from this task, the council at the study session on reach codes urged staff to begin study of a full ordinance, but we see no mention of that on the staff's update, so I ask that it be changed accordingly. Council, please listen to the youth. Please save our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryanne Monteschemi. Go ahead, Ryanne.
Good evening, City Council. I'm commenting regarding the goals in general to identify dedicated funding sources for transportation plans, especially active transportation and transit. I know this is something that the city has been working on and has looked at how to structure different fees to more directly support active transportation and transit. I just encourage continuing that work and implementing recommendations from city staff to do so with community feedback as well. I also encourage trying to identify if there is a way to phase the 19th Avenue/Fashion Island Boulevard and Norfolk Projects to front-load quick-build active transportation improvements instead of spending potentially a year or more on studies in order to greenwash the 10192 Direct Connector project. I, and I think that these are all important projects, but if we can get bicycle improvements earlier instead of waiting a long time, that is something that should be explored. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, since we are starting a new process, I don't think I did a great job explaining it tonight. We do have one other person with her hand raised. They may not have been on at the beginning. Would you like to take that call?
Thank you very much. Let's allow that one. But also, all people need to know that we are changing a little bit the way we do the process. At the beginning of any public comment period, we will be asking for everybody to express their desire to speak under public comment. If you're here, we need your public speaker slip. If you're online, we need to have you raise your hand so that we know how many speakers there will be so that we can set an appropriate amount of time for each speaker to speak. So, yeah, Madam Clerk, please go ahead.
Okay. Alex Wagenfeld, please go ahead and make your comments.
Hello, I'm Alex Wagenfeld. Sorry for that confusion. Thank you for letting me speak right here at the end. It's nice to talk to you again. I was there recently. I'm 16. Once again, name is Alex Wagenfeld. I go to the Nueva School in Bay Meadows, and I'm a San Mateo County resident. I'm here to comment on Objective 27, the decarbonization initiative. I'm very disappointed that the city council deferred a full-reach code for existing buildings, and it's taking up only a limited number of minor electrification changes for existing buildings. Disappointment, disappointment is what brought me here today. San Mateo is a leader in the climate fight, and this is awesome. We are some of the first to pass certain climate policies, and with that, we have an outsized impact. Cities tend to follow our lead. We pass policy, and many follow. We are leaders, and leaders create change. Leaders inspire. And in some ways, it's hard to see where your leadership touches who's inspired. So I wanted to let you know, when you create positive change, such as passing these policies, we are advocating for, you inspire many. You inspire me. You inspire the people here today who are speaking. You inspire my generation, I think most importantly. And you inspire us to keep on fighting for our planet. And how do I know this? I'm taking a class called Climate Change Sciences and Solutions, and we just did a unit on public, public policy. I told my teacher about the work I do, and he asked me to present to the class about the advocating I do on city halls like this. So I shared my work to the class. I explained how I was advocating for policies to decarbonize existing buildings and infrastructure and eliminate, and to eliminate methane gas use by 2030. When I was telling my peers the work I do, something I didn't expect happened, happened. I saw their eyes light up with hope. I saw them temporarily come out of this state of gloom, which we are normally in when we talk about the future of our planet. And I saw my sphere getting hard to make their own change and advocate for their own public policy in their, their own city. The, the power, the ability to make change is in your hands. You inspire, inspire many. You can do it. As a world, we've procrastinated crisis for far too long. And I just want to let you know, we don't have time to waste. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no other speakers.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Okay, thank you. Bring it back to the council now. Do we have council discussion?
Yes, could we get clarification from staff on the, is the report going to reflect the last council meeting that the objective for 2025 is clear?
So staff believes it already does. So when staff presented at the last meeting, we said we were going to move forward with the decarbonization plan, and that plan would include studying the measures that were in that proposed ordinance. So if you read the staff update on item number 27, the last part says, following the completion of the code updates, staff will work on a decarbonization plan evaluating how to achieve the 2030 goal. And that statement is, was our intention to move forward with that study that we talked about at the last meeting.
And I think you're referring in part to what the city council directed staff to do, which is, in addition to the, the reach codes that address existing buildings, pay particular attention to the feasibility and economic hardship clauses that would go into that ordinance to bring it back to the council in early 2023. Is that, is that right?
Correct. All that would be studied as part of that decarbonization plan.
And do staff still believe that that would not prevent us from passing the ordinance so that it could be and would be applicable starting in January 2025?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Kathy.
Okay. Other questions? I have questions. I want to go a little farther with what Joe was just, Councilmember Gofalls was just working to clarify. With regard to 2025, I just want to make sure I heard all this exactly correctly. What the staff is saying right now is that they're going to work on what was the first part of the last meeting's discussion on this, which was the new building reach cuts. That there will be further outreach and analysis on that starting now and going through when?
So the new reach code, new building reach codes, which are part of the building code amendments.
And these are, we're already doing most of this.
Those, so those the council gave direction on, and those will go forward for adoption at the October 17th meeting. A lot of the, the pieces that were in the decarbonization ordinance that is being referred to are go beyond the building code and use other mechanisms, including city police power. And so all of those other mechanisms and other approaches are going to be studied as part of this decarbonization plan, which staff will again begin working on as soon as the reach codes and ordinances are brought forward to the city council at the next meeting.
Okay. And what you're describing as the decarbonization plan, that includes reach codes on existing buildings?
It includes measures to impact existing buildings, yes. Primarily, it includes measures for existing buildings.
So therein lies what's being called right now the full-model reach code for, for 2023. Okay. And so I'm asking for clarity here, because what I thought I understood last week was that, or last two weeks ago, was that that was what was being looked at for further outreach and analysis. That's correct?
That will be, along with other possible measures.
Yeah.
So, so that will definitely, everything in there will be looked at along with other universe of measures that may not be included in that particular model ordinance.
So now, when I look at item 27 under the status for this item, looking to bring options to council for review in September, is September for an effective date of January 23. So, I mean, we've already, this is talking in the past, right? With September's come and gone.
So with our internal council deadlines, typically, the things that are coming before you have been finished before the prior council meeting. That's why all the status updates say status as of September 2022. So this was written prior to the last council meeting. However, nothing in it has really changed. So the council did discuss the building, the building code amendments at our last meeting. Those will come forward for council adoption in October. And after the adoption of those, staff will begin on the decarbonization plan, which will study this model ordinance that was directed by city council at the last meeting.
Okay. So just to be clear then, what, what is said here under status update as of September 2022 does not include what we discussed at the end of the last study session on this?
It, so it does include that because staff had already, was already going to recommend studying that model ordinance through a decarbonization plan. So that council agreed with that request for staff, that they moved forward with that. So that is included in this. So it does state in the second sentence again that staff is going to be moving forward with this decarbonization plan and that includes analysis of the model ordinance.
Okay. So, so, okay. So, good. Now I understand what, what is being said here. I think we all have heard many people express concern over the current state of the earth, of its climate, of the fires, of the hurricanes of, which are increasing in not only frequency but severity, increasing numbers of people dying as a result of climate change, many different forms of climate change. And I think that, as you know, I voted no. Right? I was not in favor of the way we were last time because I did not think that we should be going forth with another six or nine months worth of outreach and analysis. I believe the public has, has already spoken. And I had a conversation with the city manager here just a couple of days ago that I think if we continue asking, we're going to get more of what we already heard. And that's because when you go and knock on people's doors, which the members of the San Mateo Climate Action Team have done, they find that two-thirds of the people that answer the door respond, yes, we're concerned about this. And yes, we would like to see the city take some positive action about this. So I'm interested in seeing if we can actually shorten that timeline and move the action up so that we can be, I think, more responsive to the urgent calls that we hear from our members of the public. I have to say that there are also many members of the public out there who might feel differently, and also some others who maybe aren't even fully informed. And that's probably because they think we're going to take care of it one way or another somehow. They, they don't worry because they think things always just work out, which they don't, as we know. And that's why we're here. And that's the city council's job, is to be the last line of defense for the people of San Mateo here in these dire situations that we're facing right now. So I need to make two things. First, I want to say that under the existing policies that we're looking at, where it calls for, I think, I think it was item 4B under the, where there were remodels, and it said that the city would include that if a permit is taken to remodel, that there should be a heat pump water heater installed, which is great because the water heater does most of the polluting. But we should also add that the heat pump HVAC system, which is heating and cooling spaces, should be included also. Because the fact is that that is an item that will also be a great inconvenience. And rather than being something where people wait for it to burn out, and then in the middle of winter, try to live for a couple of days with no heat, which happens even now sometimes. People should just plan to change their appliances. And we should make it clear that we're asking for these things to be done. We're basing this as contingent upon the promises that we're seeing and hearing coming forth of federal dollars being made available for incentives, for rebates, for tax credits, that we see money being made available by the state for those same things. However, if that money is not made available, nobody will be expected to do anything. If they're remodeling their house, and they're doing it because they have to, maybe they need a roof, they have to replace some parts of their house, the interiors, because their roof leaks, that's one thing. But if people are seeking to remodel their house, I think it's good that we ask them to replace not only the water heater, but also the, the HVAC system. That, and I understand you want to say something about that. Go ahead.
So there was a measure that was approved by council that'll be moving forward on October 17th. It does address replacing the heating system in a house. It is triggered when an air conditioning unit is going forward for permitting, but that is a very typical situation where we see those advanced renovations happening. So that is covered in part already by the proposed reach codes that I'll leave before you at October 17th.
On the rare occurrence that those people who have air conditioning in San Mateo need to replace it, right?
No, it's actually for new air conditioning systems.
Oh, for anybody that wants to add air conditioning. Okay. So we would suggest that rather than air conditioning, you should actually do a heat pump system which heats and cools.
You're requiring it, yes.
Requiring it. Good. Thank you. I think that's great. So then I want to just get in my last words on the other item, which is, I think that we need to seek to shorten the period, if not eliminate. the period, if not eliminate it altogether, of outreach, further outreach and analysis. And I want to know if we have anybody else around here who may have had some second thoughts on this? Please, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, this this ultimate decision is going to be made by four new council members up here. And I respectfully disagree with one of the public speakers who said that about all seven candidates, you know, I don't know, agreed with what they were saying because I was here. I've watched the tape again, and every single candidate said they agreed with the actions council took. And 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 to my knowledge, not one of them was a proponent of the more aggressive path forward. So I think to to speed things up and not let staff have a chance to to thoroughly vet all these things. And I, again, I respectfully disagree that the public has spoken here because we've heard a lot from activists. They've knocked on a lot of doors. But I have heard from many, many members of the public that have no idea what was being proposed and they are not in favor of this. So what does this mean? This means that it's still the public is is being educated about this. They need more information. I think the council needs more information. And this is not a time to rush forward.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Councilmember Gothos.
So I think my takeaway is very different from Councilmember Rodriguez. I I heard the same, and I watched all of the candidates forum. I heard all of them supporting the January 2025 deadline. So it's not that they want to slow it down. It's that they are very comfortable with the city council speeding it up and the and the pace that we're on. And I I don't feel that the reach codes in general need to be vetted further. I think I think we've had pretty close to unanimous support for the concept of the of the reach codes and for applying them to existing buildings. Everyone understands that that's the direction we have to go in and that we have to go there quickly. But in our last meeting, the language on feasibility and the language on economic hardship is not at a place where it needs to be for us to actually pass it. And so I I respectfully want to give staff the time so that we can look at all of the the appliances that are available right now and what they cost and whether someone can afford that. Because if they can't afford it, then there's an economic hardship. And if there isn't an appliance that could be used for that, then we have a feasibility issue. And we're taking a snapshot of that right now. I think that Andrea, over the next few months, is going to be able to tighten the language on that part of the ordinance so that it is ready to be proposed to the council. And I'm confident in our council next year, based on the candidates forum that I saw the other day, that they're going to be supportive of the of the ordinance that that we were supportive of at our last meeting. So that is my rationale. And I don't think it's the whole, I don't want to undo it. I don't want to continue to to study and debate the whole thing. But I do think that there are very real things that need to be studied and that Andrea will be able to nail down the appliances that are available, the economic hardship that could exist for some residents and where we should place that number for the ordinance. That's that's still how I feel from last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee, any comments?
My position has not really changed. I I feel that the community outreach process and the vetting, it has been quite robust. And and I also heard a very broad spectrum of community members supporting and and also council members supporting a 2025 goal. I think that it's a little bit sort of incongruous to hold the this reach code to a standard that isn't, in terms of vetting, that isn't applied to a lot of other aspirational policy goals that we set, for example, like recycling water through the wastewater treatment plant. We had set that goal years in advance of the the feasibility analysis, because we know that it's what's needed to do. And and developing a step by step plan and a policy that clearly articulates feasibility from a rebate in financial hardship perspective. Also, the the technical and just like logistical barriers that that could exist for some of the older stock housing. I I think that we could draft a policy for 2025 goal today. I feel comfortable doing that if it's the council as well. And and I think that we would be standing on on a lot of groundwork that's already happened, as well as the industry experts from PCE that are telling us that this is clearly a direction that that they support and a timeline that they support. So I I trust their expertise. And and I and I also trust the process that we've gone to gone through today.
It's I can remember, excuse me, Councilmember Lee. So I want to just, oh, sorry, Council, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks. I just want to be clear. This ordinance hasn't gone through the Sustainability Commission yet, has it?
It has not.
Okay, so I haven't changed my mind since last time. The first thing I said is I'm tremendously optimistic that we can get something done by the deadline of January 1, 2025. And I concur, the community will get there. And I think many, many members of the community will get are already there. And I'm optimistic we can do this. So what we did with the reach codes is we've put them through the grist. They've gone through Sustainability Commission. They've come to us. Why is it that we're throwing away that procedure? We've got time. We've got the energy. We've got the resources to get it done in the way we normally get things done. And I have not heard anybody say, by God, we don't want to have have this happen by January 1 of 2025. And I want to go on record. I think we can do it, and I'm optimistic we can do it. So let's follow our procedures. Let's get it out to the public. Let's get people on board. If, as Councilmember Rodriguez said, there are people in the community that have their reservations, let's bring them along. This community belongs to everyone. I think everyone needs to be heard. I think we can make it happen. And I've gotten so many emails that say you're not going to get this done. And I I just don't share that pessimism. I really think optimistically this can get done. I, nobody has said it's not important to our children, to our grandchildren, to the environment. Just because we want to spend the six months to do it right? It doesn't mean that we don't think this is a noble goal. We don't think it's a necessary goal. And I just, I guess I I'm optimistic and I want to go forward and get it done. So that's where I stand.
Okay, well, thank you for the passion. I just want to say that I have just a few words. One is we do not have excess climate lying around to burn. And that's what's happening. The other is urgency. It's an overarching thing that people are feeling right now. So I want to express a couple of things. One, thank you for the clarification on the heat pump air conditioning. And I'm happy to hear that that 2025 is still considered a doable goal. However, I would like to get it somehow added to the record here. Okay, in the last sentence that we're seeing on this particular part of this item 27, could I say something about, okay, that the city is moving towards the goals that we have that we've been discussing for 2025?
Rick, can I interrupt? I'm sorry. Just the language that we're using, just to it's not capturing what's happening here. So on the one hand, yes, we have goals. And our goals are already very clear that we're decarbonizing and and 2030 is when we want to be completely carbon free. Goals is not the issue here. Yes, we're passing our our goals, but the discussion seems to be about an ordinance, about passing a law that has to be enforced. And if we're passing a law that has to be enforced, the language of that law has to be operative. It has to be clear enough that it can be enforced. And we're not at the point where we have specific enough language in the feasibility and and economic hardship sections to actually enforce it. That's that's the only thing holding us back. Otherwise, we could go forward and pass this law that would have to be enforced starting in January 2025. The goal, I think, is is clear. We all share the goal. The language of and the enforcement of an actual law that we would be passing and putting on the books and expecting code enforcement to to deal with is a different story.
Okay, so thank you. Now I'll finish what I was saying, which is regarding the economics, which is something we do need to have clear. And in writing, we need to be able to say that this government is offering these incentives, these rebates, these tax credits. But we also need to make very clear what I've always said from the beginning is that if all else fails and people cannot afford to do anything, we're not going to force them to spend money they don't have on something they can't afford. Okay, that needs to be one of the very clear economic statements that the city makes about this. So seeing all that, I guess it sounds like I have one other council member who's in forward of trying to move forward a little bit faster, but the other three are in favor of what we're looking at. The only thing then I would like to add is is that anybody have a problem with adding the language, just making clear the goal that by 2025, we'll have the steps you and you are talking about in place and be ready to move forward with.
That's what I heard Kathy say.
We'll add the language. We'll add the language to the the report here.
Just to clarify, are you looking to update the staff status update? Or are you looking to amend the city council objective that's in the strategic plan?
The city council objective in terms of no, I don't think we need to do that. I'm just looking at the status. And the status is the place where we're leaving it in our discussions right now is that we want to see actionable climate action. We want to see the existing building reach codes put in place. We want to see the greenhouse gas free appliances be made mandatory by 2025. And if possible, we should say that we're here to help people. We have all of this information, all of these resources for funding. And like I was, I've been telling several groups I've been speaking at, there's something about, you know, people say, oh, the contractors aren't ready. They don't know what we're talking about. They can't get the equipment. So what you have to do when you want to drive a market is you have to create demand. You create demand by having a policy that says this is what we have to do by this time. If people are calling for contractors with trained people to do that work and machinery, that's the the type that we need to have going into the future. This machinery is already being used in Florida and all up and down the East Coast. It's not uncommon. Heat pumps are not uncommon. They're not unusual. They're not normal for here. We haven't done that because natural gas has been a very plentiful fuel. But we can make that change. We can drive that change by making policy.
Rick, the heat pumps will be enforced on January 2023.
Yeah, and I think you know, as Kathy mentioned, this, the status update was as of September of 2022 and reflects what staff's recommendation, which ultimately a majority of council approved. But we can certainly take that status update information that's in the strategic plan and better articulate the the council direction from the October or from, excuse me, from the September 19 meeting. If that will please council.
Well, it would be good. I would like that. Yeah, I would support that.
What is it?
We're instructing that you work towards January 1, 2025. Yeah, we're just gonna, we'll better articulate in the status update what the next steps are to make them more clear from council's direction from the last meeting.
Okay.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, looks like we're, thank you very much. And now we're going to move on to the next item. Item two, tonight's study session, Board and Commission Policy Considerations and Campaign Finance Dashboard Review. And we have the deputy city clerk, Mr. Martin McTaggart.
Thank you, Mayor, honorable council members. This briefing covers policy considerations relating to boards, commissions. In addition to council guidelines pertaining to mayor rotation under the city's newly adopted elections by district model, and will conclude with a demonstration of the city's recently published campaign finance dashboard. City staff are requesting council direction on four main items tonight. Items one through three relate primarily to the city's ongoing efforts to integrate equity and inclusivity into all aspects of city operations. In particular, this briefing, we will focus on representation of the wider community on boards and commissions. These items are one, compensation for service on advisory bodies. Two, qualifications to serve on advisory bodies. And three, ex officio members to the Parks and Recreation Commission. As I discuss these items, I will provide examples of developments within other agencies within the state, which the council may wish to consider. The fourth item, which council requested to provide direction, as mentioned in the administrative update, to console, excuse me, console guidelines to reflect the city's move to district elections. To provide counsel with a brief background on why these items are being brought forward in this briefing, the development of the city's diversity and equity tax force arose from the fiscal year 2022-23 city council objectives. A milestone in this objective was also was to also research practices in other jurisdictions that have youth representation on boards and commissions, analyze best practice, and develop policy options for implementing enhanced youth participation in the city's decision making process. As previously mentioned, the change to district elections is not currently reflected within council guidelines for mayor rotation. Following the 2020 election, council discussed the need for greater transparency in the availability of campaign finances. This evening, we are excited to share the campaign finance dashboard with you and members of the public. As written today, the city charter provides that members of boards and commissions shall receive no compensation for services as shown on this slide. During its May 2022 meeting, a diversity and diversity, equity and inclusion task force met with the objective to develop recommendations to extend representation on boards and commissions to historically underrepresented communities. In summary, the task force noted a current trend in challenges filling vacancies to advisory bodies. Moreover, the role incentives can play to recognize the value of the work and time offered. The task force arrived at a strong recommendation to consider compensation for boards and commission members. City staff also conducted a compensation study. The DEI task force did not provide a recommendation for the sum of compensation or which advisory bodies should receive compensation. However, the task force did recommend that appointees be given the opportunity to opt out of receiving compensation for their service. Attachment one of the agenda report shows a study of 22 cities within the state who provide compensation in the form of stipend per meeting. Some common themes were noted from the responders to the survey. All responders referenced providing some form of monetary compensation for service to their planning commission. The majority of responders provided either a smaller amount of compensation or no compensation for other advisory bodies. The average stipend for planning commissions was $141, the lowest amount being $10 per meeting, and the highest amount being $400 per meeting, which was represented in Costa Mesa, Costa Mesa and Truckee. As mentioned on the slide here, a charter amendment by vote of the public would be required to effectuate this change. And here you have a compensation study, which is a visual representation of all the responses received in this informal study with Chino, Chino Hills and Montclair representing the average. Moving on to qualification for service on boards and commissions. On the discussion regarding increasing representation on boards and commissions, another potential barrier we looked at in the study is the qualifications for service, in particular the requirement to be a qualified elector, and thus a U.S. citizen. In October of 2019, Governor Newsom signed Senate Bill 225, which authorized general law cities to appoint California residents without requirement for citizenship to boards and commissions. The governor noted that citizenship should not be a barrier to consideration for boards and commissions in California. In 2020, the 2020 census resulted, excuse me, the 2020 census results indicate 35% of residents in the city of San Mateo identify as foreign-born. Moreover, the city's boards and commission diversity reported noted people of color are underrepresented on San Mateo's boards and commissions. Other cities have updated their requirements for boards, for service to boards and commissions to align with SB 225, including Santa Ana, Costa Mesa, Berkeley, and Santa Monica, to name a few. As with the compensation for service item, the change of qualification for service would equally require a charter amendment by vote of the public. As noticed in the previous slide, the city of Santa Monica put this question to their voters in 2018. Moving on to ex officio members to Parks and Rec Commission, coming back to council fiscal year 2022-23 objective to explore more ways to expand youth participation and representation on boards and commissions. Council discussed various options to achieve this during the January 29, 2022 special meeting. Staff have reviewed the practice adopted by the city of Belmont, which has added two non-voting youth members who must be between 13 and 17 years old at the time of appointment. Unlike the two previous items, this action would not require a vote from the general public or unanimous, excuse me, unanimous vote of the council. Also, just a quick plug, the city clerk's office has recently launched its Generation Voter Initiative, which is designed to provide additional points of entry for youth engagement. This initiative began with two youth interns in the city of Belmont who helped develop elections content as relatable and informative resources, which has helped pre-register hundreds of 16 and 17-year-olds, and we're excited to roll that out in the city. Moving on to the next item, which is the selection of mayor under district elections. The city of San Mateo has adopted district-based elections, beginning with the November 8, 2022 general election. Current council guidelines provide direction for mayoral succession based on election Each city council district was designed to contain a nearly equal population. However, as seen on this slide, the districts do not represent an equal number of registered voters. Staff are recommending to council that we update council guidelines to reflect that all newly elected or appointed council members draw lots to determine succession. And finally, moving on to our campaign finance dashboard review. Council provided direction to staff during the March 1, 2021 city council post-election review of campaign finances with a broader goal to provide greater accessibility of campaign disclosure. An initial scoping exercise was performed to look at examples from similar campaign finance dashboards currently available. City staff met with staff from the city of San Francisco's Ethics Commission, the city of Oakland, Maplight, a nonprofit organization focused on campaign transparency, as well as representatives from Netfile and Tableau, which is Salesforce product. Staff developed the scope of the dashboard to include contribution location, for example, contributions within the city, contributions within the county, contributions outside of the county of San Mateo, as well as contributor type, and aggregation of total contributions under $100. In addition, we also concluded a total, a visualization which includes total contributions in relation to total expenses. Following the November 8, 2022 general election, additional content will be added to provide a cost per vote received analysis using turnar data. The campaign finance dashboard will be rolled out in two phases. Is one will focus on the, on the November 8, 2022 candidates, which will include Form 460 filings and heavily leverages the support provided by city IT staff. Is two will more closely follow the San Francisco Ethics Commission model, including automa, automation through an API, which will continually provide updates based on Form 467s, 497, and 496. We will now move into a brief demonstration of the dashboard, which is available on our website, and users can find this by clicking or entering www.cityofsanmateo.org/campaign-dashboard. Let's see, bear with me one moment. There we go. So to illustrate, users visit this website, visiting the link that I just mentioned. You will scroll down and you will see the city of San Mateo, city council, campaign financing data. It'll provide users with an initial introduction to what the dashboard includes, also including a brief visual representation of city council districts, as well as council candidates. We will also have some disclaimers, providing users with more information as to what data is included within the dashboards and external links to other content. As you can see, as we move through the dashboard, you will be able to provide with various different data points. So include financial activity summary. As you can see here, we have visualizations which provide users with the total amount of contributions coming in to candidates, as well as the expenditures. And each of these fields is interactable. We also have a visualization of contributions by contributor type. These include contributions from individuals, contributions from recipient committees, self-contributions, small contributor committee, other, and unknown. We also include contributions by contribution amount. This includes contributions under $100, between $100 and $499, and any contributions provided $500 and over. We also included, as previously mentioned, contributions by location. As you can see on the dashboard, visualizations will show various different data points provided by color on this stacked bar graph, and each of these are interactable. So you can highlight which area you're looking to find a little bit more information about. As I mentioned, we have contributions from within the city of San Mateo, county of San Mateo, but outside of city limits, California, but outside of San Mateo County limits, outside of California, and location unknown. And lastly, we have another map visualization, which shows the contributions by location. Users are able to navigate through this and manipulate and move through the dashboard. And that concludes the demonstration of the dashboard. I will bring back the PowerPoint to show which items were requesting council direction.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have any questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the compensation for boards and commissioners, was, were any, like, studies cited or any evidence of, of it actually working or anything like that? Was that taken into consideration by the, by the committee?
Not by the committee. We performed, City Clerk's Office performed an informal survey of cities who provide compensation, but I don't believe there was any discussion during the DEI committee meeting.
And, and when I was, and when I was looking at the, the distribution, there's, there is no, no cities like in the Bay Area have tried it. It's mostly like Monterey, I think, was the closest or one of them.
I think the closest that I was able to find, let me just see if I can pull that up. Had Fremont.
Fremont. A question about the, again, the deliberations of the, of the subcommittee. For the ex officio members of Parks and Rec, did they discuss any, any other alternatives to this, like, for example, like partnering with high schools and their civics classes and, you know, being able to make it part of the class to participate and things like that, other than just having kind of two members participate, having more than, than those members participate?
I'll hand it over to Kathy for, for that question, or...
Hey, I think this came up under the council guy, sorry, goal-setting session with a desire for this, and so we looked into it. And looking into it, we discovered several bumps in the road for doing, adding two seats to the Park and Rec Commission in that, in order, the, the qualification that you have to be an elector of the city right now means you'd be 18, and 18 is not youth, 18 is an adult. And so then we talked with the city of Belmont, and we learned how they had done it in their experience, and that made kind of a little bit better sense to have ex officio seats without tinkering with our setup. And then we worked on, the generation voter is another way of providing youth input. We are working on voter registration drives in our city's high schools with them. So that is civics.
Great. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Other council members? Questions? Councilmember Lee?
No questions at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no questions anymore, we'll go on to public comment. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I have no in-public, in-person public comments. I'm asking anyone who would like to comment in the audience to raise your hand virtually or submit a public comment request. I will give you a few seconds to do that. Since we have very few people on the call, I'll say we have one hand raised. I'm going to say that we go with one public comment from Lisa Diaz Nash.
Thank you. Three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Benia and City Council. I would like to speak up in favor of providing compensation to people on boards and commissions. It is a very vital service for our city, and we want to expand the, the pool of applicants as broad and diverse as we possibly can. I would recommend that we provide compensation, not just for planning commission, but for all of the commissions, so that we don't wind up with a hierarchy of, of how people perceive commissions. Every contribution is valuable. I'm also in support of amending the citizenship requirement so that all members of the community can participate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is completed.
Thank you very much. Then I'll close the public comment period, bring it back to the board for any discussion. Do you want to put up the slide so we can go down and address the things? Any discussion? Yeah, go ahead.
One more quick question. When you said that 35% of the residents identify as being foreign-born, that doesn't tell you how many became citizens, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. You know, I figured as much. Okay. Go ahead, if you want. I can change it after.
Okay.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Should I just go down?
Just even go down the list.
Okay. So the first one, it is always a tough, this is a tough issue, and it's, it's tough getting more and more participation, and I think that that's something that we've found, not only with our commit boards and commissions, but we've experienced it in our general plan in getting input. And, and so I, I kind of feel like it's, this solution is a grasping at straws solution where it's like, well, let's try to do anything. No data, no data behind it. I can't even see the logic behind it. And the reason I can't see the logic behind it is because are we going to pay like a living wage for the hours? Is it going to be more than you get paid on city council? Do we want to have these positions that have always been volunteer positions to, to be like, your incentive is so you get compensated? For me, the answer is no on, on almost all those, on all of them. I, I think that in order to make it worthwhile for somebody who's, who maybe is financially burdened to serve, you'd have to pay, you'd have to pay a significant wage. And, and then I totally disagree with, with the caller that we should compensate every single board and commission. I mean, some of these meet like twice a year. I, I think that, I, I just think that it's, it's obvious that, that the folks that propose this really wanted to do something. I'm just not convinced that this is, is this the answer, and I, and I think it'd just end up being a waste of taxpayer funds. On the qualifications to serve on boards and commissions, I'm support, I'm supportive of that. I think it makes a lot of sense. That, that will, that might be one of the bigger, bigger influencers in, in expanding the representation. I think that's, that makes less sense. You know, the ex officio members of Parks and Recreation Commission, I, I'm mixed on this one. I mean, I can see both sides. Practically speaking, I don't know how much it's going to really change anything. It will give two enterprising individuals something good to, a good experience, and they'll be able to, you know, perhaps talk, give a youth perspective, but they could also give a youth perspective in any planning, any Parks and Rec's commission meeting by just speaking in, in public. And so it, this to me just seems a little gimmicky. I could get behind, I, I'm, it's probably going to be popular, so I am not really against it. I just, I'm very skeptical that it's going to do anything. Selection of mayor under districts, that makes sense, a lot of sense to me, and I love the, the campaign finance dashboard. Great job on staff on that one. I think it's going to really, it's going to make it a lot easier for that transparency to show up on, yeah, back there. Both, both of you get credit. Good job. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Let me just, let me just clarify on the selection of mayor, drawing straws. That's what you're supporting?
Yes. Okay. I think that's the only fair way to do it.
Next? Go ahead, Council, Deputy Mayor.
So, yeah, I mean, I would concur a little bit about the compensation for boards and commissions. I almost would love to see it based on need, but I don't think you can do that. So I kind of feel like, and it's not going to be a huge sum. Is it enough to move the needle for somebody? I don't know. And if it is, I'd like to see it based on need rather than across-the-board salaries, because then we're not really achieving what we're setting out to achieve. So I have some reservations about that. I'm fine with the qualifications to serve on the board and commissions. I concur. That may move the needle quite a bit for us, and I would welcome it. I think it'd just be wonderful. Ex officio members of Park and Rec, I think it's great. It's a way of getting youth input in, in a way that I think is formal, if you will. And so I would like to see that. I would like to see two folks, they'd have to be over 13, is that right? Is that what you said?
Yeah. So the city of Belmont, it's, at the time of appointment, they need to be between 13 and 17.
13 and 17. Okay. I think that's great. I can deal with the selection of mayors, and kudos for the campaign finance dashboard. I do have one question on that, and that is, will that information be available after the election closes that particular once? But, so you could go back in time and see? You're going to keep it up? Okay, cool. I didn't know if it was going to go away or something. Okay, cool. I didn't know if it was going to go away or something.
And after the election, we'll add additional content. We're going to have the total contributions received by candidates as in contrast to the total number of votes received.
Oh yeah, I saw that one particular item. I guess you wouldn't know that until after the election. Makes perfect sense. So anyway, well done on all fronts. I, I really, I'm excited about some of these changes. So thanks for that.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Goff.
Sure. I agree with the comments that have been made so far. So compensation for boards and commissions is, is one idea to try to solve the problem that we all know exists, which is trying to really encourage and, and stimulate participation in our boards and commissions. It is a huge ask and, and too much for many people to take on to serve on these boards and commissions. And so the amount of compensation that we're proposing would be grossly inadequate. And, and I think the council isn't paid enough and the staff aren't paid enough. And all of these things are true. And I, I hope that we do find the right solution to, to really stimulate participation in the boards and commissions even more than it is. And, and I don't think it's fair to say that we don't have, I mean, we could charge people to be on our sustainability commission. We could charge a lot of money. We are, we're very good and succeeding at getting people interested in participating in our process. So if we can spread that around a little bit, that'd be a good thing. Qualifications to serve on boards and commissions, I agree with my fellow council members that, that this is a good thing to, again, broaden the group of people who can serve. I support ex officio members to, to Park and Rec. I think this will give us a, a different perspective. And I think this is one way to encourage a younger perspective on this council. And I agree with the way that it was proposed, which is not to create two new seats, not to expand the board, but to create an ex officio position so that they can participate and their voices can be heard without having to amend the charter. Selection of mayor under district elections, I agree that it should continue to rotate and that it should be done by law based on our current system. And kudos to everyone who participated in creating the campaign finance dashboard.
I just want to know if the winner gets the short straw or the long straw? Anyway, Councilmember Lee?
I'll, I'll start with compensation for boards and commissions. And, and I'll share that when I was going through the appointment process, I was, I was criticized for not having the right experience because I didn't have the commiserate volunteer experience in number of years. And I, I think that for a lot of, a lot of folks who are, are challenged with financial hardships and, and maybe work in nonprofit sector, for example, and, and just don't have the extra bandwidth, financial freedom and time to participate. I think that contemplating a stipend, a, a small stipend, it's something and it's better than nothing. And my understanding is that I believe with the San Mateo County Commission for the Status of Women has actually been looking into this as specifically the underlying analysis is looking at how volunteer work is, faces, or is a, a particular hardship for women. And, and so I, looking at the, and considering the demographic survey data of our existing boards and commissions and seeing, seeing the demographics really, I think, benefiting from some improvements in diversification for, along the lines of socioeconomic status. I, I think that there's a really strong case to be made that looking at some level of compensation for boards and commissioners, it would, would actually broaden the pool. And, and it would help, I think that it would help attract a more diverse and reflective pool of, of candidates that, to serve. So I, I think that it's certainly an idea worth exploring. I am very supportive of, of updating the language for the qualifications to serve on boards and commissions. I, I agree that it will move the needle significantly. Happy to see that. I'm over, overjoyed to, to see the work that's been happening around expanding the Parks and Rec Commission with the inclusion of the ex officio members. One of the, the takeaways from the Belmont model that I thought was really strong was the term is actually limited to one year. And so, so there had been some concerns about, about youth, you know, staying, staying to serve for your term, which seemed in many ways just impossible, given, given their time constraints and commitments. And so I think the Belmont model is very strong. And personally, I don't, I don't see a reason to, to cap it at age 17. I think that capturing, expanding the age bracket to also include college age students, I think would be very beneficial with a one-year term. And, and then I, I do believe that there's been some movement in Foster City to actually add ex officio youth members to their sustainability commission. So I think that there are actually other, other commissions that potentially could benefit from, from the ex officio member or, and youth seat strategy that we're exploring. And so I, you know, if, if there's interest in that across the, the council, I think that that would be something to fold in into this idea. I, I agree with the updating, updating the language to the selection of mayors under district elections. I, I am just so impressed and, and proud of our city taking leadership on the campaign and finance dashboard. This is really uncharted territory in this county. And it's, I think, a really shining example of, of our city stepping out first. And, and I am just so grateful for the efforts of the city staff, including the, the clerk department. And, and then also I think IT has, has stepped up in a really big way. So I am just, you know, this is one of those, those ta-da moments for our city. I'm, I'm, I'm so pleased and so proud. And, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how it can, you know, continue to improve in terms of the automations available. I will say that I think that some, there is like some SEO improvements that could be made in terms of like making it more easily findable on, you know, on Google and search engines. And, and also linking it better into the existing website pages so that this is more front and center. It's, it's such an incredible resource. So I'm, I'm just thrilled and so proud. So thank you so much for all that work.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lee. Okay, well, I want to talk a little bit, oh, first, let me ask the question. Did I hear some mention that on the ex officios that they would be limited to one year? Or was there any limit on the term that they could serve?
That was the Belmont model.
Oh, okay. Right. Okay, good. Okay, so I'd like to comment first on the compensation. I do see a case to be made for compensating members. How much seems to be a question, but it looks like there's a wide array of what different jurisdictions have done. I think that it, it will attract, I think, people who otherwise might not have been attracted, especially certain parties that I think maybe don't participate as much. Maybe a single mother might be considering, you know, having a voice. She's a part of her community. She wants to speak. But she would have to hire somebody to watch her kids or do something. And maybe that money would help compensate for that. I think that also this question is very closely aligned to the question of how are city council members compensated? I think that also can make a difference in who we're able to attract because sometimes council members work a lot. We have meetings during the day. A working person might need to actually take some time off and maybe they can't afford that. I would like to recommend actually while I'm talking about this that we should look at, council member compensation. And I would like to ask if other council members could please comment on that before we're done because I think it's something that should be brought back to the council for consideration. What are other cities doing for compensation for council members? So that said, I support then compensation for advisor committees, planning commissions and others. In terms of the qualifications for committee members, I support that. The ex officios, I, I heard 13 to 17. I don't know why it's not 13 to 18. When a person becomes 18, they're eligible to vote. And then they can, they're eligible to be on the committees of their own right as a full grown adult. So it should be 13 to 18. And I think that they're not in, in school that long. I think that, and one year is not really a long time to learn much about what we're doing in these things. I think we should allow them at least two years to be on here with possibility of reappointment, additional years. The mayor, I agree with drawing straws. And on the dashboard, I really like it. I think it's a great thing. I like the ease with which it's navigable. And thank you very much for that work. I think staff really did a great job on that. Those are my comments.
Through the mayor, if I may. Thank you for the feedback. I think we've captured everything that we needed to and we appreciate that. I want to especially commend Martin McTaggart. He's three months on the job and he got this big project and he did it very admirably. And he really showed the city of San Mateo value system of working for one organization with the partnership he formed with our information technology department. And I want to give a shout out to, in the room, the director Pete Owen is here, along with the leader of the project who, when we got into, deep into the technology and we were going, what's going on here? He just stepped up and in a really quick way, especially while also working on the huge workday conversion, just drove this project well, and that's Jonathan Strange, along with Richie Pierce, who is our GIS coordinator. They just did incredible work bringing this forward and I just can't thank them enough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to throw a big kudos to our IT department in general because without them, I'd be lost. I call about once a week at least to get help with technological stuff. So thank you very much. So I want to bring back the question that I raised about council compensation. Are there any council members here that would like to make any comments, any thoughts on that?
I do. I think, you know, before COVID, we, we agreed it was a good idea. And then we kind of, with everything, when we were asking staff and, and we were, and our budget was all uncertain, we, we decided to kind of pause that discussion. But I think that in the, in the next year, it's probably, should come back up.
Thank you. You know the council members? Councilmember Goff.
Sure. I think that, I think this is an issue that comes back again and again. I remember Jack Matthews brought it up when he was leaving. There are, I don't know that it is necessarily the, the salary compensation, but I think that a study of what could, what could be done to better support council members is, is, is worthy. And if it's more compensation that would make the job easier, then that's, should be part of the conversation.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
So what's the question?
To ask staff to examine council compensation.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Good. And Councilmember Lee?
I support the exploration as well. And, and I think that some of the other cities that have looked into this have, have stood up community task force to, to look into it. So it's a decision process that feels fair with community vetting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And through the mayor, if I may, I participated today in a San Mateo County council member compensation survey and those results will be coming out soon. So I think it's a timely topic.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, and with that, do we have everything we need? Deputy Clerk?
Just to recap for the direction that we received, we're going to look into providing additional, we're going to come back to council with a report on other activities with agencies within the state regarding council member compensation. We'll, there's unanimous support for bringing back or adjusting the qualifications for service and boards and commissions based on registered voter, whether you're an elector or not. Do we have an agreement on the youth of the ex officio? We do. And there is unanimous agreement on selection of mayor. So we're perfect. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, then that concludes this item. We will adjourn right now. We're going to be about five minutes, I believe, before we come back for the next meeting. Thank you.